Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, agave, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here this evening. Are there any changes to the agenda that we have before us? If not, we'll operate under that agenda, then move then to the first item of business, which is Agenda Item Number Three, to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on May 9, 2017. Council does have the minutes of that meeting.
I move approval of the minutes as presented.
Second. I'm sorry, who?
You moved.
Motion by Craig and then seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they have been presented. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Now we'll move to Agenda Item Number Four. Agenda Item Number Four is a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the request to repeal Article Five, Section Twenty-Two of the Marshall Code of Ordinances. This is related to taxi service. To conduct this public hearing, Dennis, are you going to?
Sure.
I would call on the city attorney, Dennis Simpson, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. By way of background, various city staff have met with police officers and with the operators of two of the three licensed taxi services to discuss issues and concerns raised about, you know, unlicensed taxis providing service, ride for hire in City of Marshall. After that meeting, staff came out of there with the recommendation that we were not sure that it's necessary for the city to be regulating the taxi cab business, City of Marshall anymore, that it's probably best left to the free market enterprise, to those that offer, you know, good service will survive and those that don't may not. But we're not sure that it's necessary to continue the regulation of that business. Now I've received, the local operators are saying, no, we think it is necessary that we continue to be licensed, that the city continues to be involved. It's a way of not only customer service, but safety of the vehicles, making sure that we have the proper people operating those vehicles. So I guess we, you know, it's time for public comment on this. There are public safety issues. You know, it's always been my position, every driver, you're required to be licensed anyway. You're required to have insurance on your vehicles. So I'm not sure that the taxi adds more to that, but there are certain requirements, the limitations or the requirements that you have under the ride-for-hire statute, the taxi cab is higher than the minimum liability limits required for state. Right now, if you, if you, you're required to have thirty thousand, sixty thousand limits for operating a vehicle. Our ordinance requires you have to have a hundred thousand and three hundred thousand for liability, plus you have property damage of fifty thousand. Those are basically twice the limits that you would have if you were just operating your own vehicle.
And if you're operating your own vehicle, just a clarification, for hire, your regular auto insurance would not cover that liability at all?
Correct.
So basically, you'd have no insurance.
You would have no insurance, right. And so there, yes, by having the, you know, we all bring our own experiences. And I was talking to Mr. Aladeen today, who operates, owns Marshall Taxi, and I said, you know, in my business, I don't need to be regulated locally. I'm under state obligation. I'm licensed through the state. I have obligations to the state of Minnesota, but I don't have to get permission from the City of Marshall to hang my shingle out there to practice my business. Mr. Aladeen says, I'm not regulated at the state level, and I appreciate the local regulations. You, the citizens of Marshall, know that my, my drivers have had background checks. You require that I have ride-for-hire insurance, so that if you know that there is an accident, if there is an injury, I've got the appropriate insurance in place to protect the customer. And he also indicated to me, I provide service for a number of vulnerable riders, whether it's economically vulnerable, or he said, you know, we offer rides after the bars close. We take intoxicated people home. Sometimes those people are, they're not the nicest to me, but they're also vulnerable to be taken advantage of physically. But you've done the background checks on my drivers. I have confidence in my drivers that they will deliver that person home safely. So he said, there is some protection that we do offer because we have background checks provided, so, you know, and this is a whole area up in flux. I had brought some comments. The City of Marshall, I'm sorry, City of Minneapolis, obviously much bigger institution. One of their council members, when they were addressing the same issue, he said, this whole process has reaffirmed to me my conclusion that having the city regulate this business is no longer necessarily appropriate because of Uber, because of Lyft, you know, does the city need to be involved? And another taxi, no, I'm sorry, another council member from Minneapolis. Minneapolis is a city that innovates. It is a city that advances. I think Lyft and Uber, as well as the deregulation of taxi industry, will improve the transportation opportunities available in Minneapolis. I found those comments interesting, that larger cities, smaller cities, we're all dealing with taxi issues. So, but the issues raised recently, late in the afternoon when I talked to Marshall Taxi representative, you know, did kind of raise some issues. Maybe it is okay. If, if they're not asking government to get out of their business, maybe it's okay just to leave it as is.
Thank you, Dennis. We'll open it up for public comment as part of the public hearing, both from the council as members, as well as members of the audience. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as Councilman Baricola stated when we discussed this issue at the last meeting, you know, it is a public safety piece. I was of the mindset at the last meeting that, you know, it seemed like a good idea if we, if it's problematic to enforce it and we can't actually legitimately enforce it on all who may be carrying for hire, that it's, maybe it makes sense to get rid of it. But then, it also speaks volumes to me when the parties that are regulated ask to continue to be regulated. No one knows that better than those people. So I, I think that my mind has changed, and I'm, I'm in Councilman Baricola's camp on that, that, you know, take that read. If, if the people who, who we are requiring to go through this want us to continue to do that, I think that's a pretty significant statement.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I, I too was of the mindset, after we came out, in fact, I was in the meeting that recommended that we get rid of it. And then I started talking to some people who aren't in government and have some public transportation knowledge. And one of the questions that they brought up was that, should the public expect that the city has rules and regulations to ensure that an operator has appropriate insurance, qualified drivers, and safe vehicles? If the answer is yes, then all operators for hire, including Uber and Lyft drivers, should meet some minimum requirements. And, you know, when we were just talking, and some of the correspondence that I've gotten, if you drive your personal car for hire, you don't have insurance if you get in an accident. So how does Uber get around that? Because they're not providing special insurance in that world. I guess I don't know. So given that, and given that at least some of the people who are running the businesses want us to regulate them, I too have probably changed my mind on how I'll vote.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
John? Just make a comment on a few things, but discussion that I have, but the individual's out in the audience here, and she can do it much more, I should say, much better than I am. So I would point to Kathleen to make her comments as part of the community transit, really on, in either one of the departments, working on it, not competing, but as such. But I think we've had a good conversation. I'd like you to kind of cover those issues.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you for allowing me to just come up, come up and just say a few comments. And John and I did have a little bit of discussion on this, and we felt, or my comments that I conveyed to him was, we felt that having the ordinance was not so much for enforcement, but a little bit more for educating, and educating those that are wanting to provide a taxi service in the City of Marshall, a little bit more in the ordinance as far as what, what the definition of the taxi is, and that's kind of pretty much clearly stated. Because once you get into utilizing maybe bigger vehicles or providing a service where you, you know, you actually get into more regulations, I think some of that could be educated better to those that are wanting to provide a service. So that was my comment. And it's not just about safety, I think. I think you're still going to have people that could actually go out and provide us, you know, tell somebody, hey, I'll give you a ride for this amount. But then, to be able to go out and market that service and, and things like that, I think that's where the ordinance and the licensing comes in. That's the way, I think, we could see a little bit more of the regulations and making sure that we are providing a safe service in the City of Marshall for our residents. And like Sammy, like Dennis, you talked about Sammy saying there's a lot of vulnerable people. We were approached many years ago as far as what, what our thoughts were on even having taxis in the City of Marshall, because the city does support the public transit rather heavily. They, they're well-invested in making sure that we can operate successfully and efficiently. And it does take a lot of ridership in order to do that and to keep the cost for transportation down and economically. So our, you know, in order for our city to really support any entrepreneurship that's successful, I think it's, I'm happy to hear that the private providers have come to the table and support the ordinance. And also, it makes it easier for us also to partner with them as far as providing more, you know, options in the City of Marshall, too, to continue to get that, have that growing. We've looked into Uber and Lyft and some of their, you know, what they're focusing on. The rural areas aren't even in their radar at this point in time. So maybe, you know, we can address that when it comes. But that could be a long way down, you know, through, you know, way into the future yet, before that service even, unless, you know, there could be somebody, I, you know, don't quote me, that there isn't anybody looking at it. But we have looked into and seen what, what it would take to provide that type of service. And it's, it would take quite a lot more, a much larger population for that to be successful. So.
Thank you for your comments, Kathleen.
Yep. Thank you.
Other input as part of the public hearing? Yes, sir. And you can come up and give your name.
My name is Bob Quashus. I'm the owner of Southwest Minnesota Services, one of three licensed taxi services in Marshall. We are one of the, among the people who've been complaining about the unlicensed services. I see them every day. I see them picking up, dropping off people that in the past have paid me for rides. So, and it's so many people, and it's so often, it becomes obvious that this is not somebody providing free rides at all hours of the day and night. You know, and I've heard from various people that people are paying them for rides. So this isn't our imagination. It is a real problem. Had a few comments. One on ride-sharing, as was pointed out, there is no Uber or Lyft here. Marshall isn't even on the radar screen. If you look at the list of cities where they're active, they're all medium to large-sized cities. The closest one is Mankato, which I believe is four or five times the, the population of Marshall, just in Mankato itself. I do think that, you know, they do provide a million dollars' worth of liability insurance for their drivers when they're driving for Uber or Lyft. So I do think the ordinance could be updated to allow for their eventual entry here. They do background checks. They do insurance. I don't, frankly, don't see any competitive threat from them. You know, to me, they're welcome to come here. But, you know, because they're a little bit of a different animal, I think we can, we should update an ordinance rather than just toss it out, you know, to account for that. Another point, if you read the ordinances for Minneapolis, St. Paul, Bloomington, St. Cloud, they allow taxis from other areas to bring passengers to their cities, wherever they have to be licensed. So if we don't have a Marshall taxi license, well, guess what? We can no longer bring people to these major cities, and there is a demand for that. However, our competitors, who don't have licenses, they have no compunction whatsoever about breaking our taxi ordinance, nor the taxi ordinances in these other cities. So actually, it will hurt us. You know, and if, if this ordinance were to be repealed, I would stop providing service to these major cities, and that would inconvenience, you know, a number of people who live here. The taxi insurance, I can't stress that enough. I believe the unlicensed competitors are using their personal insurance. Well, if any of you were to take time to go and read your policies, almost every one of them, you'll find very explicitly prohibits use of the vehicle for, you know, taxi or livery service. So these individuals who are using personal-type policies for their cars, they effectively have no insurance. If they have an accident, who's going to pay for the hospital? You know, that's a serious consideration there. But our ordinance requires three hundred thousand dollars' worth of liability insurance, and specifically for taxis. So it's more expensive for one car. It costs the ballpark about two hundred dollars a month. But if somebody's doing a lot of rides, that two hundred dollars is, per month is nothing. That's about fifty dollars a week. A number of these people don't have limited English ability, and I suspect have never read their policies. And there's no public awareness of the issue. There's many people in Marshall don't even know we have an ordinance. So public awareness is a part of the problem. People simply don't know we have the ordinance. In some cases, people have limited English ability, so they're providing rides, and they're not aware of the break. Well, now they know they're breaking the law because there's police attention, but they haven't really explored the issue. And, you know, some language barriers are a part of that, which is why I think public awareness in English and in Spanish is part of the solution here, instead of just purely enforcement. Public safety is paramount. Who's driving your, who's driving your vehicle? You know, who's giving you a ride? It could be somebody with a serious criminal background. Uber and Lyft, you know, they do check for that. But we also check when we license people. There's a criminal history, you know, background check. Also looks for any history of drinking and driving. So if someone has a DUI or an open container violation in the last ten years, the statutes give the municipalities the power to, you know, bar them from driving a taxi. And I think it makes sense. I don't think we want any drunk, drunk taxi drivers I do strongly feel poor public communications exacerbates the enforcement problem. There's nothing on our website about a taxi ordinance. If you want to find out about it, you have to go digging in the municipal code. Of course, if your first language is in English, how would you even read the code to, you know, know what the laws are? I sent the number of you, I think I sent all of you copies of a brochure from Worthington that's in both English and Spanish. It describes a number of different laws and ordinances that, you know, they want to bring people's attention to. Doesn't specifically mention taxi ordinance, but certainly we could do that in, in our own public communications. So if we can just communicate this to many people, and especially including the clients who utilize these services, you know, make them aware of the dangers, you know, the potential problems, and the fact that it's illegal, I think we could convince many customers on their own to simply not use unlicensed services. I do think the enforcement has largely been ineffective. I think there's opportunities with training and more leadership within the police department to improve the enforcement. One thing I have discovered, you know, I've, I've known several people who were interviewed by police about their use of an unlicensed taxi service. Generally, they've denied it and said, oh, no, I didn't pay anything. What you don't see afterwards, you don't see them in unlicensed taxi anymore. You know, they don't want the questions. They don't want the interaction. You know, many of them lack legal status. You know, they don't want interactions with the police. And when they discover that, you're riding an unlicensed taxi, draws attention to themselves. On their own, they quit using that, that service. So I think with public communications in Spanish and more interest from law enforcement, I do think the, the problem can be reduced or perhaps even eliminated. So in total, in summary, I don't think we should repeal the ordinance. I think for the most part, we have a good ordinance. It's not overly complicated. I, I myself don't like anything that, that inhibits free competition. But I think it's fair and just for us to do background investigations of people who are going to drive taxis, to check and see that they have some minimal level of taxi insurance to protect both themselves, their clients, and other members of the public. And for the most part, we have a reasonable ordinance. I think we could, you know, change a few things, and for example, allow for the eventual entry of Uber and Lyft. My suggestion there would be to create a transportation network license. So instead of licensing each individual taxi that, say for Uber or Lyft, license the service, you know, and insist that the service do the background checks that they already do anyway, and provide the insurance that they already do anyway. So I think the two mod, business models can coexist. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. Well, one last point. My clients and Armando's clients almost exclusively pay cash, don't have credit, don't have debit cards. You know, they pay for the rides in cash. So they don't even have the ability to use Uber and Lyft. And also because they pay cash and unlicensed operators are paying cash and don't have licenses and don't seem to have much respect for our laws, I very much doubt they're paying income taxes either. So we have the burden of, you know, paying for relatively expensive taxi insurance, also paying income taxes. Having a license makes the Minnesota Department of Revenue aware that, that we have a business. It makes us subject to potential audit if we aren't paying our taxes. Where if you don't have a license, you're getting paid in cash. Well, guess what? You're probably not paying income taxes either. So it puts us at a, the present situation puts us at a disadvantage. But repealing the ordinance would put us at even more of a disadvantage.
Thank, thanks for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
David?
Mr. Quashus, two questions. One, could you give an estimate about how many unlicensed drivers you think are active in Marshall right now?
Well, there's, there's two that are very active, you know, like within Marshall itself. You know, you see them every day. One very active on weekends. So perhaps you see him twelve to fifteen times at Walmart, you know, dropping people off, usually in the parking lot, picking them up. There's another one, there's a couple that are active every single day of the week. I don't think they have any other employment. You know, there's this pure taxi, and one of them also interprets. So believe me, she knows what the, you know, she reads about this. The, there's another one, it's a new one that Armando told me about. I haven't seen them yet. The others, I believe there's eight or nine others that almost purely do out of town. They pick people up. They bring them to lawyers' offices in Minneapolis, or immigration court, or, you know, other activities. They seem to not want to be seen too much in Marshall.
Okay. So if I'm following your numbers, Bob, there's about half a dozen that specialize locally, and eight or nine that tend to specialize longer distance. Would that be about right?
Yeah. Three very active in the city, and another eight or nine that mostly seem to go outside the city.
Well, you say three that are active, but it sounded like a couple that are part-time or situated.
Yeah, one of those is very active in Marshall is part-time.
Okay.
But there's a, there's a couple
Okay.
that are full-time and, and very local. You see them all the time.
Okay, thank you. And then second question, you're mentioning getting information, education out in the community, English and Spanish. Would there be any other language you'd recommend that we do the same treatment to?
Um, I'm not aware of, well, because I, I kind of focus with the Hispanic community, I'm not aware if there's, for example, Somali unlicensed taxis or Maong. But those are other two groups that would come to mind. But I'm not aware if it, if it's an issue with those two groups. But the type of literature I'm talking about could be used not only to address unlicensed taxis, but other ordinances that people who have limited English proficiency perhaps need that information, and it would help resolve a number of problems. For example, people putting TVs out by curbs, thinking the trash will pick up. Well, they don't. But if you make the information available in other languages, there's a number of these issues can be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Other input as part of this public hearing?
I have a question for Rob. Yeah. On this, with regulating this, obviously it's a fall on your, your shoulders and your officer's shoulders. You guys implemented, if this ordinance stays, is there a plan being implemented to regulate? How do you, how do you regulate it?
Well, that's part of the challenge. That's part of why we suggested unregulating the two issues you deal with, is in a conventional setting where you've got a marked vehicle that says taxi, you know, that's pretty easy to check on. And we've always made an effort, if we become aware of someone doing it, to check if they've got a license. But it's the underground economy, and especially frankly, the non-English speaking that makes it more difficult. And then if they're going out of town, you know, even then, more difficult. So I guess it would be a matter of trying to further encourage people to identify them. But the challenge is, when we've stopped and talked to people, is, you'd said, you know, they say, well, I paid gas money, or I did this, and it's trying to sort out. I mean, partially, I think they've probably been coached, you know, as far as what response to give when law enforcement, you know, does it. So, so it'd be sort of a matter of, I think, as, as he said, a mixture of trying to communicate what the law is in a bilingual manner, and then continuing, you know, try to avoid, you know, there's a harassment, you know, where you have the same people being stopped. But if we've got something specific to try and find a balance between making contact and confirming that people don't, and hopefully, as he said, if people are confronted once about it, ideally, they would be less willing to go with an unlicensed person. And possibly, that's the thing we could do, if we had someone, give them a information on the ordinance in Spanish so they understood the liability, you know. So I, I think it would be a matter of some enforcement together with, you know, trying to educate the public. And, you know, some of it ends up being, you know, for instance, we work fairly hard at illicit drug enforcement. It still goes on. You know, I think we get the more extreme cases, and, you know, we, people have, definitely have to be covert on it. So, you know, I think the thing would be to try and take the edge off it and, and reduce, you know, ideally, the, you know, we're always going for voluntary compliance. So I think if we can educate the people, the existence of it, the vulnerability of riding with someone that doesn't have insurance, you know, ideally, they'd be willing to be more selective in whom they ride with.
That brings another question up. For enforcement, what license taxes you can answer, Michelle? Do these taxis, you guys have to display your license? Now, as, as a contractor, I display my license. People know that we're licensed. So when somebody gets into your taxi, you know, for your help, do we put in the ordinance, taxis have to be just say taxis so that they know they're licensed?
I don't think.
Or do we put where you put your license, like, like I said, kind of electricians, plumbers, whatever?
I don't believe it's a requirement.
Is that something we add to the ordinance?
Yeah.
Like, as you see my truck driver, my license is plastered on the bottom. I think as a doctor, your license is displayed in your office. So people.
It doesn't have to be, but it is.
I know for daycare, we have to. When my wife did daycare,
Right.
we had to display that license. So is that something we add, if we don't eliminate the ordinance? Is that something we add to it? To make your job easier, so you stop that car, their license has to be hanging in that car.
And to Jim's earlier point, it's probably your role to provide the leadership for the outreach to the community that's using, perhaps being taken advantage of in this service.
Right.
In anticipation of this meeting, City Minister Johnson and I did have that discussion also. What, what do we as a city need to do as outreach, by information, by education? What do we as a city need to do as outreach by information, by education of the various obligations, requirements, not only for taxi service but other business on behalf of the city?
Right.
Any other input as part of this public hearing?
Couple of questions. In the ordinance, it says all licenses shall be... The license tags, including the number and year for which issued, shall be plainly visible from the front of the conveyance. Are they talking about our regular vehicle license or are they talking about the taxi license? I assume they're talking about the taxi license.
I think that's a taxi license.
Right. So I mean, there is identification on the vehicle that it is, that it does have the license, and so you should be able to check that. My second question would be, so if they violate this and don't have a license, what is the fine or penalty?
There... I'm not aware... I believe it's a simple misdemeanor, but there is a fine and, you know, we have issued citations, but it has been where we've gotten someone willing to say that they had given someone money. So it's not frequent, but we make contact and we have filed charges, but it's a simple misdemeanor. So I'm assuming it's a neighborhood of $150 fine.
I was just reading through materials here for the City of Minneapolis, and what they do is they impound the vehicle and then they have a citation, administrative citation for a minimum of $250. And if you have prior citations, the amount can be anywhere between $500 and $2,000. So...
But they also have an $80,000 license fee per company, and they've got a huge bureaucratic system to enforce that. $35,000 per Uber registration, $80,000 for a taxi service.
They impound you for anything. When I was going to med school, if you didn't move your car, no parking, they impounded it and it was a $273 fee.
That's why you took up riding bikes.
It's a lot cheaper to get your horse than they rip off your bikes.
Yes, we haven't impounded vehicles.
And I'm not saying we should. I'm just saying, they're making it serious enough that people think twice about doing it. And, you know, it's not a slap on the hand.
Right.
It's pretty substantial.
The ordinance would have to be revised to facilitate that, and there actually are a number of things that we had talked that a nuisance ordinance would be with an administrative outcome, a good way to go. But that is the other side of it then, is having a, you know, an increased cost for the licensing to subsidize some of the administrative effort on it. But again, that's... I think we can try and find a balance on that, but I think when people are cited, it's had an impact and promoted compliance, but we haven't towed in any cars and I believe it's a simple misdemeanor with a relatively low...
Yeah, it's a violation of the local ordinance, which is a misdemeanor level.
Yes.
Right, yes.
I was just doing some research on this. Brookings, New Ulm, Alexandria, Hutchinson, Wilmer, they all have taxi ordinances and somehow they must be able to enforce their licenses. So I would assume with our highly professional police force, we can...
Well, I appreciate that. I have talked to New Ulm and they don't... He said they don't spend any real effort on it, you know. I mean, I think we can find what works for us, but yeah, we can touch base with some of the medium-sized cities and see what, if there's other things that they're looking at in terms of process that we aren't. But yeah, it's just dealing with the things we've dealt with. It's not been on the top of the radar. It's like other things, if we've gotten a complaint, we've tried to follow through and if we become aware of someone that frequently violates a specific offense, especially a traffic one, they get more focused attention to deter them from doing it. But as I said, it... Some ways, it's almost like illicit drug use, you know, so...
Any other input as part of this public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? Do you have something?
Just one final item. I want to say that I myself mirror many and all of what has been said here in the course of going through this from an enforcement standpoint. As Rob said, as Bob had said, I believe the best would be the community outreach approach to these people with the language barriers and potential cultural barriers and overcoming those to better educate them on what is regulated, what is unregulated, and the consequences of that would be a very good effort in moving forward. And final note, I don't have much more to add than that. The city staff would be changing their recommendation on this motion to not repeal the ordinance.
Do you have a comment you wanted to make or... And I'll have you come up to the microphone then too.
I'm sorry, I'm just here to help somebody, but it is not for lack of education. The community knows, the Hispanic community knows. As I talk to the taxis here in Marshall, Minnesota, I tell the families, so-and-so, the non-licensed charges you $2, $3 less than what these two people charge you for license, you know, they have a license. Is the life of your husband, your son, your wife, is it worth $2 less? So they do know because I talk to the community a lot. That is my goal in the community, to educate the population where they're, you know. And I do tell them constantly, when I know that they're going to Minneapolis, I have the tendency to ask, "Who's going to take you?" They won't tell me. I says, "You know," I says, "there's two guys here that have a license and they are licensed to drive. I cannot drive you in my car because I don't have the license to give you rights." And so-and-so, whoever is going to take you, I don't know and I don't care. But they also don't have the license. No, do they have the coverage? If something happens to your husband, to your wife, who's going to pay for those bills, for the medical bills? I see a lot of these people that they see also giving right to kids to the school. Who is in danger? Our kids are in danger, you know, and they're too young to know the difference between a dollar and no dollars. But the parents choose, you know, same as the daycare. Many kids don't have no daycare or they don't have the license that daycare providers. But because they're charging a couple of dollars less, and that's the same thing with the taxi.
Thank you for your comments, Tina. Other discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? If not, we'll move to a vote.
There was only one motion and that was to repeal. We don't have a motion.
Can we do a voice vote on the... Voice vote on the close?
Someone else wants to speak? If you'll let me.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Armando Rugama. Soy el otro que tiene el otro taxi aquí en Marchal, Rugamas Taxi.
I am Armando Rugama. I'm the other person that has the Rugamas taxis.
Bueno, yo este prácticamente pues le doy el servicio a la mayoría de los hispanos que viven acá en Marshall y algunos que están alrededores de Marshall.
I practically give a right to a lot of the people that live here in Marshall, also outside of Marshall.
Y bueno pues ese es el trabajo que tenemos, pero a veces nos coordinamos con el señor Bad pues para darle servicio a la gente cuando él anda muy ocupado entonces ellos me llaman a mí, ¿verdad? Y así le damos cobertura a la población hispana.
I coordinate my rights with Bob sometimes and that's the reason we're able to give rights to a lot of people in the community of Marshall.
Pero nosotros procuramos hacer todo bien, ¿verdad?, para poder darle raya a la gente, pero a veces, ¿verdad?, es muy difícil porque andan muchas personas de manera ilegal.
I try to, we try to do everything the correct way, but it sometimes makes it very difficult because there's a lot of other people that they're illegal doing the rights illegally.
La vez pasada tuvimos una reunión, ¿verdad?, con el jefe de policía y creo que era asistente del alcalde para ver de qué manera solucionamos ese problema.
The other day, we had a meeting with the police, the chief of the police department and the mayor, I think, to see how we can solve this problem.
Y entonces planteamos la situación, pero pues decían ellos que no se podía, ¿verdad? Tener una prueba fue asiente para poder determinar si ellos andaban dando raya de manera ilegal.
But they told us there was no way for them to find out whether the people were giving the rights legally.
Pero bueno este ellos dicen que no cobran, ¿verdad? Pero no es cierto porque lo que pasa que la gente pues no van a decir que le están pagando a él porque ellos le cobran un precio más barato.
The other riders, the drivers cannot tell the drivers are paying them because they are giving a cheaper price. So that's the reason they can give them rights because they give it to them a cheaper price than what they do.
Pero nosotros los vemos, la mayormente el día sábado, los encontramos hasta ocho, diez veces cuando ellos van a la Walmart a dejar personas.
Well, we noticed that the other drivers, because they go travel to Walmart about eight times, giving rights to people in Walmart.
Y en otras ocasiones pues también dan raya a las plantas, ¿verdad?, de trabajo como la Turkey Valley y la Xuan.
There are other times too that they also give rights to Turkey Valley or Xuan's.
Y lo que hacen ellos es de que cuando van a dejar las personas pues los dejan en la parte de atrás y cuando los van a recoger también pues se parquean en la parte de atrás de manera que nosotros no los veamos.
And the way they do it is the drivers drop their people off in the back parking lot and they drop them off and pick them up at the same place so that we don't know where they are giving rights to from.
Lo mismo hacen cuando van a la Walmart, pues se parquean en la otra puerta donde no hay mucha entrada, ¿verdad? Y cuando los recogen pues ellos los montan en los parqueos.
And the same thing they do when they go to Walmart, they put them in another door where there's not a lot of traffic and then that's where they drop them off and pick them up in the same place, right there.
Sí. Entonces pues es algo, ¿verdad?, que nos está afectando a nosotros porque nosotros pues tenemos, pagamos un derecho, ¿verdad?, para obtener la licencia.
And that's what is affecting us because we do pay our money to get our license. So it is affecting us a little bit.
Le hacemos la inspección mecánica al carro.
We make the mechanic, you know, we do all the inspection for, to make sure that our car is in good shape.
Pagamos la seguridad de taxi.
We pay the taxi insurance.
Este cada año pues pagamos para hacer la contabilidad del negocio.
We pay every year their taxes, our accounting taxes.
Y después al final pues pagamos los impuestos a la Yare.
And then after that, we pay our taxes.
Entonces son cinco gastos que incurrimos pues y ellos este por eso cobran más baratos porque no pagan ningún tipo de impuesto.
And that's the reason the other drivers can afford to charge a cheaper price because they don't do any of those things that we do.
Y entonces queremos ver de qué manera ustedes nos ayudan para poder resolver ese problema porque sí debe haber una manera.
I'm sure there is a way and that's the reason we're here, to see how can you guys help us to resolve this issue.
Just one clarification. You referenced a meeting with the Director of Public Safety or Police Chief and the mayor. I think you probably meant the city administrator. I was not involved in that.
Sí.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other input or discussion on the motion on the table?
Motion is to close the public hearing, yes.
Motion is to close the public hearing.
I support that.
If there's no other discussion on the motion on the table, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Okay, then the proposed action would be based on the input at public hearing. I would assume that the consensus of the council is to not take any action or keep the ordinance in place as it is.
Mr. Mayor, I would actually like to modify that a little bit and say that and also put it to the Legislative and Ordinance Committee for possibly improving or updating the ordinance if there's an opportunity or advantage with that.
So you want to restate that motion?
I move that we leave the ordinance in place and actually request that the Legislative and Ordinance Commission or Committee review the ordinance to see if there's updates and improvements that can be added to it.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. No, just there.
Craig's is not coming through here.
They're voting the motion that's in bright yellow.
Right.
Yeah, he doesn't have it.
We all do, but he doesn't.
There it is, there it is.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, that motion does pass unanimously. I thank everybody for your input as part of this public hearing. Thank you. Move then to agenda item number five. Agenda item number five is a consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda, and they include the recommendation that the City of Marshall approve the resolution dedicating city-owned property as public road right-of-way. Consider the authorization declared vehicles a surplus property for the police department. Consider the authorization declared body armor a surplus property for the Marshall Police Department. Consider the approval of transient merchant license for the country stop. Consider the application for a temporary on-sale liquor license for Lyon County Historical Society for an event June 10, 2017. Consider the approval of 2018 regular city council dates, time, and locations, and then consider the bills and the project payment. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purpose of a separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor, item number eight, please.
Any other item? Not identified, a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
I want to move...
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. So we'll move then to the item that was removed from the consent agenda, which was agenda item number eight. Now it's agenda item number 12. Steve?
So, Mr. Yant, if you can maybe address this. So we have an officer who's leaving the City of Marshall. His vest was purchased for $700, as I understand. Half of that is paid for by the state.
Yes.
Through grants, I'm assuming.
Yes.
And that is now about three and a half years old.
Yes.
And recommendation was to purchase price of $50, but the way that I do my math, it's probably worth a little more, $170. And his new employer will not pay for that? They won't give him a new one?
Put it in the context, it's sort of, it's some fee. We hired an officer from Lyon County with an almost new vest and they gave us the vest for free. Again, that was a thing. It's sort of a working with the officer rather than trying to get the maximum return. We could probably get more. I mean, the thing is that they're not... It's of little value to us. We've got a lot of older vests from people that have just left and turned their vests in, and they might pay more.
My question would be, Rob, do they take their vest with them? I mean, we buy it, it's his vest. It's tailor-made to him.
Yes.
He takes the vest with him. Do we charge him for the vest?
We're asking $50. I mean, it's sort of a arbitrary number. Like I said, some pay less, some pay more. We've sort of, you know, if it were a newer vest, we'd probably ask a little more. But again, the two things we look at, the one is keeping him safe in his new job with something that has little value to us. I mean, we've got old vests. Frankly, they're hard to get rid of, you know. They don't... We don't want them just out where other people could get them, you know, and use them. I mean, frankly, they're still going to deter bullets even after five years, but the warranty expires and the refunding for the state is tied to that five-year cycle. So we wouldn't want people that shouldn't have body armor to get them, so we can't just throw them out. We can't sell them just on surplus property because there's a lot of people we don't want to have body armor. And so it's a matter of helping him in the new career and getting some payment. So it's sort of an arbitrary thing. I've... If it's got a year or so, I've sort of gone for $50. If it's more, I've gone $150. You know, it's sort of a figure out of the sky. We could probably get more from them. They're not going to be able to get reimbursed for a new vest for him for a year and a half. And it's just trying to basically get enough to cover our administrative costs for processing it. You can't just walk out the door with it, but again, as a courtesy, we've gotten employees from other departments where we just got the vest they came with. So it's subjective for every department, agency to decide what they do. We could probably get more, but...
My thinking, and just so everybody knows what I'm thinking...
It actually would be something that we could consider if the funding becomes available. The other part of that is if they offer us some type of funding and we don't think it's enough to financially make it beneficial for us, we don't have to accept that money. So, we're not committing to anything here. We're basically requesting the funding and once they make an offer to see, we may decide that either we do Phase One or we potentially could do Phase One and Two, so, or reject them all completely, so.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any questions for Bob?
I move we authorize a middle of the request to be placed on the revolving loan fund intended use plan.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to vote.
Thanks.
Agenda item number fifteen. Agenda item number fifteen, Consider the Service Agreement Between SMSU and Studio One TV with us tonight, Director of Community Services, Scott Vandermillan. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A little over a year ago at this time, we brought, city staff brought before you a service agreement from SMSU to provide Internet service on their campus for a fee to us to utilize, obviously, Internet access because our Studio One TV programming is now housed there. That agreement has gone extremely well. Both parties have agreed to renew the agreement and that is what is before you tonight. So, that has been reviewed by the city attorney and we recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Questions for Scott? If not, is our motion?
So, move?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? We'll move to vote. Motion passes, will note one abstention. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Agenda item number sixteen. Consider the resolution authorizing the execution of the master partnership contract between the city of Marshall and the state of Minnesota. Jason, do you have this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This agreement provides the authorization for the DOT to enter into agreements for collaboration with the city for several different types of services. For example, this agreement allows us to enter into professional services agreements, roadway maintenance agreements, emergency service agreements, et cetera. Essentially, this agreement allows MINDOT and the city to respond quickly and efficiently when opportunities arise for us to work together. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the content of the agreement, so it's the recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution authorizing execution of the MINDOT master partnership contract.
And this is the boilerplate agreement that we've had in the past?
Correct.
Questions for Jason?
Jason, what happens if you don't do this agreement?
Well, I would imagine then we have a longer, more arduous process when it comes to coming to terms with MINDOT on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, and it appears to me you would have to have an agreement for every single thing that would have to occur. If a roadside gets knocked over, you'd have to enter into an agreement as to who's going to reinstall a road sign or streetlights. There's just a lot of things that happen by signing this agreement without having to go through those individual agreements.
This comes through a lot of bureaucratic layers and makes everything much more ambitious.
Correct, shortens the process.
Yeah.
It's kind of like a mutual aid agreement in private businesses.
Yes.
Your Honor, I would move that we accept this agreement.
Motion by Steve, is there a second? Seconded by David. Discussion?
I have some questions. Back in March, March 26th, we, didn't we vote on this before? Wasn't there a resolution in March 26th? I think I'm looking in the wrong place here.
I think that was for the Highway 68 project, so that was for the specific construction. Does that make sense, basically?
That would make more sense, yes.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
The other question I have is, we have a letter here from Minnesota Department of Transportation and they put in bold print here, you know, it's a new resolution, and in bold print it says only the named officials may sign the agreement. If anyone else signs in the named official's place, the agreement will not be executed. I know some of the resolutions we've had in the past, we've indicated that the mayor and city clerk or city administrator or so, so forth would sign these. Are they looking for something like that in this resolution or are they okay with just saying city officers? Because it's in bold print, so I don't, I'm not sure how fussy they are about this resolution.
Do you have an answer on that, Dennis? I think we would look at--
I would think that is to be modified by us locally to insert the official's name, the mayor and the city--
With the mayor and the city clerk's name in there, in the resolution?
Yes, yes.
So, then the resolution would include those changes?
Yes.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number seventeen. Agenda item number seventeen is the Commerce Industrial Park Michigan Road Improvement Project would consider the resolution declaring the official intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of tax exempt bonds. And this project is not being awarded at this time, but this action was, is in anticipation of a possible grant award, and so this would be necessary to have it placed prior to that grant award consideration.
Correct.
Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick background, the Commerce Industrial Park project includes subdivision grading, installation of sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, and street improvements along Michigan Road. On April 20th, we received three bids, the low base bid's RNG, for $3,792,178.50. The alternate bid was requested, which included provisions to account for potential deed grant funding. That low alternate bid was Midwest Contracting for $4,4,847.25. The award of bids will be dependent upon the level of deed participation in the project and this project or a portion thereof may be financed by the sale of bonds with repayment coming from various sources. The included resolution includes the contract amount plus engineering and contingency for the amount of $4,650,000. As the mayor said, this is being brought before the council at this time due to deed grant funding requirements, so staff would recommend that we approve the resolution.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason?
Mr. Mayor and Jason, just for clarification, the difference between the two bids is depending on if it's a deed award then prevailing wage--
Correct, the difference is prevailing wage.
--or other conditions come into play, that's why there's a discrepancy in the bid amounts.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
John, and then Glenn?
We, since we've already bid this, do we know how--
We've received bids.
You've received bids?
Yes.
But, I mean, how long are those bids good for? Since we haven't pruned out on a grant, we're not really sure.
Right, we have 90 days to award this contract, so that puts us into mid-July.
All right.
I have the same question. But, another question would be, we noticed there's a difference between whether there's no deed funding and deed funding. I'm curious as to why the engineer's estimate would be the same for both when we know it's going to be less with no deed funding?
I think that's making the assumption that if we receive a certain level of deed funding, we would, we would award one contract over the other. So, this is the max amount that would be bonded, if that makes sense.
What I'm, I mean, you gave an estimate of what you think the project costs--
Yes.
And as a general rule, wouldn't it be true that with deed funding, the project's going to cost more than if it does have deed funding? And so, wouldn't your estimate take that into consideration when you estimate?
Are you talking about how we arrived at the $4,650,000?
The $5,265,000, yeah. $5,265,000 engineer estimate.
Oh, prior to bidding, that engineer's estimate?
Yeah, it's the same for both and wouldn't you naturally assume that if there's no deed funding, that it would probably be a lower estimate?
Yeah, I suppose, but that number's kind of irrelevant at this point now that we have bids.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Right, right. It's a good point, it's a fair point.
Any other question for Jason? Thank you, Jason. You had a recommendation, I would entertain a motion.
I move the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number eighteen, Consider the Approval of a Temporary 3.2 Wall Liquor License for the Marshall Baseball Association. This is actually an extension by 30 days to accommodate the construction and transition to the new ball field. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, and you are correct. This is essentially an extension and the reason I wanted to speak to this is I think it's only fair that we waive the fee because we had indicated to the baseball association that we anticipated we would be out at the new complex by June 1st. Obviously, Mother Nature has dictated a different date for us, so the baseball association graciously has agreed to provide concessions out at Channel Parkway for another 30 days or to cover us until we make that transition, so I would ask that you waive the fee.
Questions for Scott?
Scott, did they pay the initial fee?
They did.
Okay. So, if we didn't waive that fee, they would have to pay another $50.
That's correct.
I would move that we accept that with, with waiving the fee.
Motion by Scott, seconded by David. Discussion? Scott, are you in a position to talk about when you anticipate the new ball fields may be available? Obviously, by June 30th, right?
Obviously. We would like to be as close to that as possible. The last kind of target date that we had talked about, Mayor, was June 15th. In talking with Preston today and another day of rain that sets us back, we anticipate it's going to be between June 15th and June 29th, somewhere in there. We have about a 10, 12-day window once the final concrete is poured that we can't be out there whatsoever, so the weather will dictate to us how we get that done. But our, you know, our goal is in that range. I, you know, I like to say to you, June 18th, it would help our planning process as well.
I think the question is 30 days enough, extension?
I certainly hope so, Dennis.
Yeah.
The grass looks good.
Grass looks great, you're right, John.
Yeah, we have ponds full, irrigator powers down.
Yeah, we just, I told Preston today, we need to turn off the irrigation.
Yeah, almost spray water on wet ground.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nineteen is to review and consider the vacation along and calling for the public hearing regarding the easement on the vacation of the easements in Commerce Industrial Park. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Same issue that was addressed to the HRA. The request has come in from Marshall Municipal Utilities for property acquisition to vacate several existing easements. The action tonight would be to call for a public hearing and I will get some more clarification from Commissioner Rose as, or Manager Rose as to the, the need for the vacation.
I move the motion.
I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John, the call for a public hearing on the vacation of the easements in the Commerce Industrial Park. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number 20. Agenda item number 20, Consider and Improve the Right of First Refusal for United Community Action Partnership, UCAAP formerly known as Western Community Action, for seven lots in the Parkway 2 Edition and the Stockholm Edition in the city of Marshall. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. United Community Action Partnership and working with the Economic Development Authority is looking to have first right of refusal on a set of lots located off Oslo Avenue and Stockholm Avenue near the Parkway 2 Edition. These lots would be used for future single-family home projects that they are anticipating will come into the future. Right now, they are working on constructing maybe five, five single-family homes through a grant program. This would be a future place for them for additional grand dollars as to that. And then potentially in the future, they would be looking at land out in the Parkway 3 Edition for multifamily housing as well. So, this right of refusal would give them the option to buy it when they have a successful grant application to continue the work that they're doing now. Dennis, do you have anything to add?
No, this is just a continuation of their interest in future home development out there. As indicated, there is a purchase agreement. We do have five lots sold, we'll be closing on that shortly. If, if these lots are purchased by somebody else, they would like the right of first refusal. Seven lots, no actions taking place on these lots for quite a while, so it's, it's good to see some interest, so.
Before there's a motion here, the motion, as it's worded here, is talking about the seven lots, but are there eight lots?
There should be seven.
There's seven in this part and then there's one at the top, so.
It would be eight lots.
The legal description there shows eight lots.
Well, I thought it was seven, but I'll check the legal description to make sure that we have it correctly.
So, that's what includes it.
It does add up to eight, doesn't it? Yeah.
So, maybe the motion should be eight.
Should be eight.
I believe one's list doesn't outlaw it, though. Isn't that correct? Yeah?
I think the one you're talking about, they're only using five lots of that first six, so really, they shouldn't want to have a first refusal on that.
Well, and they do, that's the second one, that's the Stockholm Edition extra lot there, yeah.
Then there would be seven. Then there shouldn't be seven.
Yeah.
So, that one should be on the exhibit, then?
Yeah, well, I'll check to make sure that, yeah. We've gone around this description issue before with Ucap, I'll make--
John?
Just make a statement, I don't need to abstain on this vote, so.
More than I can abstain on this, I do a lot of work for them.
Any other questions for either Nick or Dennis? You have the recommendation before you, I will--
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by David. Discussion?
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I think that from a discussion standpoint, we, and we talked a little bit about this at the EDA meeting, I think this is the absolute right thing. The city shouldn't be getting into property ownership, we should let people buy it, private companies buy it, develop and get it on the tax rolls, so I think it's the right thing to do this.
Yeah.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes, will note the abstentions. Agenda item number 21 is Commission Board Liaison Reports. From my report, the Regional Development Commission did have their, their monthly meeting, it was actually held in Walnut Grove, routine business for the most part, and I do chair the revolving loan fund of the, for the region, which is about a $2 million loan fund, and that has been fairly active and throughout the region, and there's been some recent activity mainly in the city of where they've been for housing issues down there, so it's been fairly busy with that. Craig?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Steve?
Community Services Advisory Board did not meet in the EDA. We talked about item number 20 like we just did and the TruShrimp project and things that are developing in there, still, still coming on.
The rain.
At the, at the Planning Commission meeting, they had a contractor come before the commission and wanted a variance for building an apartment building, and he's using a new material, and we, we have an ordinance here regarding the apartment complexes that they have to have a certain amount of Class 1, Class 2, Class 3, Class 4 materials, and the material he brought forward wasn't listed in any of these classes, and what happened is if it was a Class 3 material, he needed a variance, if it was Class 2, he didn't need the variance. So, there's a big discussion whether it was Class 2 or Class 3. City staff thought it was Class 3 and needed a variance, and there were people on the Planning Commission that really didn't know and some felt it should be Class 2, and so they voted it to be a Class 2 material, and I think city, city staff disagreed with their, their choice. And what I heard from the commission members were that a number of them felt very uncomfortable because in the ordinance it says for all these classes, if it's not listed, you look and see if it's an other comparable or superior material, and it says as approved by the Planning Commission. So, they have the discretion, if it's not on the list, to decide where it goes, and they, they use that discretion. And I think they felt very uncomfortable, a number of them anyway, making that decision. And I, and I talked to them and I think they would like the, like the LNO Commission, Legislative and Ordinance Commission or Committee, to go back and maybe revise that language and take away that authority for them to decide. I think some felt maybe, in this case, it didn't show it that way, but maybe the city staff has more expertise in deciding what class it would be than some of the members of the commission. So, I think this is something the LNO Commission, Committee should go and, and look at and consider changing the language here.
On that note, I visited those folks. On that Class 1, 2, and 3, that's something that's been designated by one person, which was our building inspector. That never, when that was discussed, that ordinance, that never passed out of planning and zoning. That is, that ordinance, that passed 3 to 3. So, the citizen input was disregarded on that. I think that whole ordinance needs to be looked at, so we encourage more building in town, because that's where people say we have Marshall rules. That's an example of our restrictive regulations that we have built up in Marshall against development. You know, that developer has said, and I've talked to that developer, I know it quite well, that if he'd have to comply to that, he would not build in Marshall. So, we need to form, I think, not necessarily change the wording there, but we need to take a whole look at that ordinance, inform a commission of citizens, builders, folks all together, and actually get a consensus on that, not something that, that was pushed through, well, like I said, never passed out planning and zoning. It never passed out of that commission with a majority. So, that whole ordinance needs to be, not, rules, needs to be looked at and reevaluated so we can get less regulations and less restrictions to get building up and going in Marshall again.
David?
Not to belabor, but if, taking James's point, if we're going to revisit that whole discussion, there must be some established industry standards of how these materials are classified, and I'm going to guess that if the, the developer was proposing this new previously unlisted material, it's probably, if it's commercially available, it's been established under some classification scheme in the industry, so maybe that's what we should look at if we're revising the ordinance to make sure we're aligned with the industry standards.
Good suggestion.
Greg? Mr. Mayor and I agree precisely with the, with my two previous colleagues' comments, and I appreciate Mr. Barrickler bringing it forward, and I know in a number of the cases that we work with, with like public infrastructure projects, we use the 11-state standards, which is a consortium of 11 states, engineering and the practical industry, both the engineers and the construction industry come together and determine what are acceptable practices and materials based on climate and geology and the other things that affect it, and, and I think that's exactly where it belongs. Otherwise, if we leave it in the hands in a default like, like Jim talked about, coming out of the committee with a deadlock, we're arbitrary and capricious, and I think that's dangerous.
Very good. Thank you, Glenn, for, for bringing that up. John?
Well, we already had a report on the EDA, MMU met, and one of the items they're reviewing is potential of cash redemption of one of their bonds. That looks to be the way it, it appears, it's about a half a million dollar savings for the city. They're also doing some improvements on the water treatment control system, updating some of those, some of those control systems are quite out of date, there's parts no longer available, so they're going to be doing an upgrade on that, putting more higher technology into it, and then we're also going to be doing some roof repair of, thanks with the rain, they've got a few leaks up there, too, so be working on that, but it's about the extent of the MMU meeting, so.
David?
Police Advisory Board met last week on the 15th to set up the, the training and interview process for the expected new hires, and we'll be hearing more about that at trust incoming meetings. Jason, question for you, do you know if Glenn intends an airport commission meeting on June 6th, which is the normal meeting date?
If he intends on attending, is that what you asked?
Oh, on holding?
Holding. I do not know.
Okay, well, we'll sit tight for that. That's all.
I was out of town for Marshall Area Transit and then also the Senior Citizens Center met last week. They've changed their bathroom, there're just new push buttons on the bathroom doors. And then I, just a little fact that Barb gave is the average age of the person that joined the community center is 70. Our baby boomers are now reaching 70, so they expect a large influx of folks joining simply because of the demographics. Something to keep in mind as we deal with, with the senior center. And yes, Nick and I are the only two on the end of this council that can't join.
Whoa.
I demand a recount on that.
I thought I'd thrown it out. I knew you liked that one, Craig.
So, with that, we'll move to agenda item number 22. Councilmember individual items, Craig, let's start on your end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have a couple. One is, and I brought this up earlier, I've been in significant contact with an individual property owner, owns a single-family home near Turkey Valley Farms. The homeowner has been consistently complaining regarding noise. It's apparently from the ammonia condenser system on the roof at Turkey Valley. I've met with the owner, listened to the noise, contacted and met with management at Turkey Valley, and I have kind of, it's, it's a dual involvement in this because I would be the initial screener through my, my daily work and then, and then plus as a, as a council member, and this was something that he had started originally with Elaine, and I talked to her, and so per my, my request, Turkey Valley has taken a number of noise readings throughout the day and night, and they did, and I was able to review their data, I've been involved in noise studies before, and they did a, they did a really good job. I've reviewed their results, I believe them to be valid, and I concur that they're not in violation of any of the noise laws. I've had a conversation with Glenn about this previously. It's not something that we would typically get involved in other than possibly as a nuisance, and there, this gentleman is, I talked to him for an extensive amount of time this morning, and he's still very unhappy. Turkey Valley's not prepared to take any additional measures that may or may not help the situation because they're not out of compliance, and they don't know if they did it, that there would even be any kind of a positive result out of it. He, the homeowner would like to engage the council in its entirety at his property, was pretty persistent about that. I contended that that, that is probably between, somewhere between unlikely and impossible, which isn't what he wanted to hear. He's not been obnoxious about it at all, he's been very understanding, very cooperative, but he is very frustrated. There's definitely noise there, but if we're standing 15 feet from his home and his furnace kicks in, it's a high-efficiency furnace, so you can hear that noise over the fan or the noise from Turkey Valley. I assume as the air conditioning season starts, there's a number of central air units that are in that same area, and it would be noisy, but he's very focused on this particular noise and it's consistent, okay? So, it's really, it's really been bothering him, he's concerned that we're not concerned about the air quality and that we're picking on him as an individual, and I did tell him that I've walked onto a number of the adjoining properties and they all hear that noise, too, so we're treating the entire neighborhood consistently. But it's probably going to boil a little bit more because I explained to him that he is the only one that's complaining and that, you know, that doesn't constitute a nuisance when there's other potential properties that are hearing the same thing.
Is that the noise that sounds like a fan kicking on and zipping up in the high pitch?
No, it's just kind of a drone. It's not a, it's not a wap, wap, wap or anything else, and it's, it's, yeah, it's really confusing because I live just a block or two more than he does in a different direction, and I was pretty sure I was hearing the same noise, but then as I started to walk around the block, I realized that what I'm hearing was actually reflecting off of two other homes, and it was coming from a completely different direction, and that's the funky thing about noise, is noise will reflect absolute line of sight, hit a hard surface, and it'll reflect, and the problem that this gentleman has is that when you're in his backyard, there's a perfect line of sight to the source of the noise, and there's three buildings that have a different angle, and all three of them reflect that noise into him. It doesn't increase the volume, but it becomes surround sound.
Sure.
And that's exactly what he hears, but we talked about a barrier fence, well, the barrier fence would have to be 30 feet high. And we talked about, I talked to Turkey Valley about putting some type of, of a Louvre wall or something like that up, which would end up being a snow trap, create problems with snow block. with snow block. Then we, and it's, it's anhydrous ammonia in the system, so if we create a, a problem with, with ability to get air in and take the heat off of that unit in the wintertime, it could overpressure. We'd end up with an ammonia release, which would be a more, far more serious problem than a noise issue. We went around and around, and he, and I told him, I said, you know, sir, you can continue to ask the same question, but I have to continue to repeat the same answer. And, you know, while I appreciate the, the situation. So I just anticipate that more will come. I, I want the council to be aware of it. If you're interested in going and listening to it, to, it's a Pandora's Box. I mean, I would certainly give you his information. Everyone is welcome there. He's not afraid of being known, although I will not disclose here, obviously, who he is. But just need to know that that's going on, and it's boiling, and he's trying to get other neighbors active, and none of them have complained. He said, well, they're all afraid to. Well, tell them to call me. They can call me, and I won't, so I need, if they're really truly concerned, have them call me. They may just be empathetic.
And the, thank you, Craig. And the, just to add, if council members do go to this site and view that, we just need to be careful not to violate the open media.
Yeah, don't go in groups. And that's what I explained to him, is we can't. It would be a public meeting. I said, what you're asking for is not possible. I, then that's the reason why I'm bringing it to you here as a group, is that if you feel like you would like to go listen to this and hear what it is, I mean, there is legitimately noise there, but, and without getting into a long dissertation about the difference in decibel and how noise is calculated as a violation. It's like all the other rules, it's very complicated, and it has a lot of contingency on time and, and duration built into it. I don't believe at all that they're in violation. Is he annoyed? Absolutely. Is he hearing noise? Absolutely. But it's, it's part of being in there. That's part one that I have. The second thing that I have is I've been, I've received emails, Jim, I think you've received these also, from an individual in our ward, or maybe they might go into, they might end up in your junk mail. You may want to take a peek. They're very recent. He's on North Bruce Street, and he has two similar but separate complaints. The first is he's concerned about the timing of recycling pickup, and that he's frustrated that it happens before 5:30 in the morning, and it wakes him up, and he's irritated, and he doesn't understand why we don't have an ordinance requiring the pickups to be later. I explained to him that that's very dangerous with traffic, that's why garbage is picked up in the middle of the night. Plus, it's a pedestrian risk, depending on how the garbage cans are left. I don't think that's getting a lot of traction.
Well, the problem with that is you have one coming in late at night, you know, you tell them that.
Sure.
My garbage is picked up ten in the morning.
Yeah, well, and I have, I have five trucks that pass my alley between recycling and deal because they have to turn around and go back, so I told them, yeah, I understand what you're talking about. I hear the backup because they have to turn around and go. But I said, I appreciate the safety part of it and the timing and stuff that they, they need to start in the, in the middle of the night. The second issue that he has, and this-
Before you leave that one, the, the recycling is also under contract in Lion County, so that-
Maybe it's a Lion County issue.
Nice. Yeah. Okay.
Is there, with our noise ordinance, you talk about noise, I know those beepers are very loud. I suspect they violate-
And they're also, and they're also required by OSHA.
I know they are, because I have them.
Yeah.
But I know it, because I load my lift up very early in the morning, I get beepers acting. Wake people up in a three-block area.
And, I mean, it, and I explained that to him, because he was, and it's really the beeper that, that irritates him, and I said, if they even had the potential to block, for the driver to block that alarm, that truck would be put out of service. And if they get into any other accident and there's an equipment check, whether it involved backing up or not, and that alarm was not functioning, they would get fined, and that vehicle would be put out of service. So I explained that to him, didn't change the level of irritation with it, although he appreciated the contact. The second issue that he has is with unmuffled and undermuffled exhaust. I'm a hundred percent on board with him on this, because I will tell you that is, and my wife says it's because of my increased age, that I'm frustrated with that, but it is, it is pretty frustrating, and, and I think it's kind of unique, and this is, I dig every community that I go to that has noise ordinance enforced, because it's a no-jake-break rule, and I, and I'm a little bit prejudiced to that because I, I come from that background. And if you have the truck properly, properly muffled, the jake brake isn't loud either, but the motorcycles that I can hear five miles out of town climbing the hill towards Lind on a weekend when I'm trying to enjoy my backyard is very irritating. That's his concern. I addressed it with, with Chief Yant before the meeting. I've addressed it with him before. One of the consistent issues that I get is with the motorcycles, it's safety so that people can hear them. And I'm thinking, well, then Priuses should have alarms whenever the ignition is turned on so that they don't get run over. So I just bring it up. It's frustrating. I know that there's a number of people in town that, that complain about what we like to call the gitter-duns, you know, the trucks with the cackle pipes and the corn poppers and all the rest of that. And at some point in time, I would like to see, when I open up the crime section, somebody getting it for illegal equipment, unmuffled exhaust, because I believe that it's like if you have a bunch of kids and they're not behaving, if you select one and eat them, the rest of them will straighten out. So I'll leave it at that.
Craig, for that, for that issue, I would, I would agree with enforcing that. Again, coming from military background, I was on Camp Pendleton, and there was absolutely no loud pipes allowed. The safety issue with the motorcycle, they, in the military, is over the top as far as safety. You came on base, you had to have your helmet on, and you had to have your headlight on, and you had to have an orange reflective vest, a visi, a visi vest. That was it. There's no jake brake stuff. So I think if somebody in a motorcycle, they've got all sorts of stuff, and you can never completely make a motorcycle as safe as a vehicle because you're in, you're open. But you wear the vest, you put the lights that, actually, they now have the flashing lights-
Yeah, the wiki, the wiki lights.
Wiki lights that go on, yeah. And I mean, you do not need to have, I, I'm a biker, I had a bike. I hate riding next to somebody who's got the loud pipes because you get off and you can't hear anything.
Every one of them has cotton in their ears.
Yeah, you can't hear. I mean, talk about safety. You're going to be deaf by the time you're our age if you ride a bike starting-
What?
Yeah.
Anything else, Steve? Glenn?
I have nothing.
John? Nothing. David?
Virtually nothing.
Yeah. And Jim?
First junior members, nothing.
At this point, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. We're on agenda item number twenty-three, staff reports. We'll start with the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The school district held their second strategic planning committee session on Monday evening of this week. Scott Vandermillan and I are taking part as committee members. Strategic, strategic planning efforts are being facilitated, facilitated by the Minnesota School Boards Association. The second session focused on identifying core values, mission statements, and vision statements. The third and final session is planned for June seventh. The city auditors were on site the week of May eighth to continue work on the audit. They spent the entire week working with our staff and commented to me how good it was to work with them, so kudos to our staff. The week was very stressful, but went very well. We are planning the presentation of the audit at the June twenty-seventh council meeting. An update on the Merritt Center position hiring process. Application closed on May fifth, and we have twenty-three applicants. We're going through the process of hiring, going through the process of hiring, with the first round of interviews taking place on June eighth and ninth. The finalists will be invited to take a tour of the Merritt Center and meet with the Merritt Center Board on June twenty-first. We anticipate the new position starting in July. I'd like to thank Sheila and Rob for their work on this. The Bike Extravaganza at YMCA, at YMCA was on Monday and went well despite the rain. This is the tenth year of the event, and they had about two-hundred-and-thirty people attend with a hundred bikes registered. People enjoyed the event, and we look forward to the event again next year. Last Thursday and Friday, the Merritt Center hosted a special event emergency, a special event emergency response planning class. Twenty-seven attendees came from our region and across the state to participate. Feedback was positive from the attendees. On Monday, May fifteenth, seventeen of our staff participated in a DISC workshop. The DISC is a self-assessment tool used to discover your particular workplace style. The workshop facilitator distributed our reports and guided us in understanding what our individual style meant and how we can better interact with other styles. It was an excellent team-building exercise, and staff feedback has been very good about it. Senator Dames and Swazinski will be having a town hall meeting Thursday morning at 7:30 at the YMCA. We received confirmation this was not changed due to the special session, so that is still on. A special-
That was for the other half of the hall. Sixteen of these sides. Ours is still the same.
All right. Thank you. A special session was called, a special session was called, and the legislature is working on passing omnibus bills to get them to the mayor's desk, or the mayor's, the governor's desk.
Ooh. You have an officer.
They want to have everything to the governor by the end of Wednesday. The BDPI bill, which is the Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program that we're seeking for Commerce Park, is included, and the funding would be at twelve million if passed. We should hear soon after from Deed regarding the funding for Commerce Park on what, if we're funded in, at what amount. That will help us determine which contract we go with. I have been told the legislation reporting, supporting Ralco's True Ship Venture is also in the Agriculture Omnibus Bill. The legislation expanding the sales tax exemption for cities is also in the Omnibus Tax Bill. And that is my update.
Okay. Questions for Nick? Dennis?
And so we've pretty much addressed current issues that I've been working on recently. The, the acquisition, potential acquisition of the Helena property has taken a lot of time, and we've, we've got some opportunities there. The documents related to the Kmart development, the road project, the easements, those who are recently filed. I hope to see, I think the bids, I think if solicited bids, I think we'll be receiving bids soon, so that project should be bid. Working with Cal and the EDA, and it's nice to see the sale of five single-family housing lots out there in the Parkway Two development, and the Western Community Action Ucap will be putting up, they have to be under contract, under construction by the end of the year on all five residences, so that's a nice development.
Thank you, Dennis. We'll move then to agenda item number twenty-six, the pending agenda items. Any questions about the pending agenda items? Agenda item number twenty-seven, the information items, including the building permits. Brings us then to agenda item number twenty-eight, Consider Going Into Closed Session. Is there a motion to go into closed session? We'll move.